All right, great. Welcome, everybody. I call this main to order at seven o'clock exactly. All right, the good news report is that our very own Amy Wheaton, who lives on the east side, a phys ed teacher at Somer High School, was voted the state of Maine PE Teacher of the Year for 2023.
Yay.
Yeah, so yay, Amy.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We are very proud of you. Wonderful news. And then, in other news not as dramatic or exciting as that, is that six hardy volunteers met on the village green about 10 days ago and with shovels and wheelbarrows returned a huge, bigger than this room and six to eight inches deep of beach was returned to the beach by man and woman power and shovels and wheelbarrows. And it looks a lot better.
Good.
Yeah, they're still, they're still smaller patches, but that was, that was great. So thanks to those hardy volunteers. And for mark your calendar, next Wednesday, a week from tonight, seven o'clock is the public hearing for proposed amendments to the land use ordinance. The week after that, Tuesday, March 5th, is the state primary. Is it eight to eight?
Eight to eight.
Yeah, and we've asked for and have gotten a volunteer election warden and two ballots.
We need one more ballot clerk for the two states.
Okay.
Okay. And it can be either a Democrat or Republican.
Okay. And then on March 10th is the comprehensive plans, baked bean, hot dog, lunch, and discussion. Right here at the community building, it's from 12 till 2:00. It is free and open to all Sorento residents to talk about the future of Sorento, Sorento moving forward.
Sunday is 12 to 2 now?
I just checked with Trina.
It's 12 to 2.
Yes.
And what day?
And that's a Sunday, March 10th at the community building. And there will be door prizes. Everyone who comes. There's some pretty good stuff out here. Okay, so I hope everyone will come. Adjustments to the agenda, I've got three sort of last minute things, but important. One is Chris Bell to talk about the community building boiler. One is, we can do this at the end, Diana, thoughts about Zoom?
Well, I'm going to talk about that in 10.
Oh, it goes in 10, okay. Very good, that's great. And the last is a request from Sherry that we can put in at number 12 or 13. So let's go ahead and hear from Chris Bell, please. And thank you for coming.
No problem. So in further discussion, we had talked about the rear seal boiler that is leaking. I'm going to try to put the gasket on it. I'm going to have the section boiler there just in case, because I've never had good luck with it. If I can do that, that will cut the cost down some. If not, then I'm going to have to replace the rear section boiler, which sounds easy, but it is not. You've got to break the boiler apart, section by section, to get to that rear section. New automatic water heater, it's going to be a state of the art one, digital. That older style is just way too expensive and the accessibility of it is just nothing more. So I'm going to go with the digital one. Repipe it in, it's controlled electronically.
With digital, do we need some kind of surge protector?
No.
No.
All the boilers protecting that.
Okay.
And then the big thing is that air vent on the side that's not open all the way is real, real slow. Obviously, that's going to be replaced, newer style motor and louvers. But what I'm going to set that up is, is there's a switch on those. So I don't want the boiler to start until that damper is fully open.
That'd be great.
So once the damper is fully open, it closes the switch and the boiler says, hey, I can run. Your valve body heads, which is what I call actuators. One of them, I can't adjust, it's just permanently stuck in a cord position. The other ones are still somewhat working. I'd say let's put new ones on there that are a lot more state of the art and get rid of those style. They run off 24 volt systems, not 120 volt anymore. And replace those in the valve bodies, gasket materials.
Well, the valve bodies, you were saying it might be able to use.
Yeah, I'm going to put new ones on.
Yeah.
If that one's sticking, there's a reason it's sticking. You know, steam is obviously hot and it's just, if it's sticking and I'm going through all that to cut it out, break it apart, I may as well just change the whole head and do the whole system. Excuse me. And the other one is the low water cutoff. I got a rebuild kit for that. I can break it apart, rebuild the internal parts of it, just so the boiler's protected. I don't want to go through all this work and then the low water cutoff fail and we end up in a dry fire situation, because that ends up bad.
Right, luckily, that has been working. It's been tested a few times.
Every time I check it, it's just full of, just full sludge.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, all of that stuff, it's going to take, I got three guys. It's going to take us about three days to do it. I will try not to leave the building at no point with no heat. So I want to try to break this up into stages. So the first stage would be focused on the section and getting all that taken care of. The second stage, the valve bodies and, and just break it up in that section so I can keep heat on in the building. So just in material alone, you're looking at $11,529.
And that's with the section, and if you don't need the section?
If I don't use the section, we can take 500 bucks off of that. I will try a gasket. Okay, when I break it apart and look at the nipple piece on it, if it looks like it's corroded, rusted, and it's not going to take that gasket material, I'm not going to waste my time bolting it all back together and then have it unbolted again. And then I got 3,000 labor. So you're into it for $14,529.64. And a new boiler would be on the upper side of 15 grand, because I priced that too. Because I kind of went both ways with it. And I didn't include the heat pumps in this quote, because I figured that'd be something later on. I analyze, sometimes you could find grant money and different rebates for communities and buildings and stuff like that. So new efficiency of Maine stuff should be coming out here pretty soon. So who knows what kind of incentives it'll have. That changes day to day.
Right. There's some thought that the, the rear section would take a while to get?
No.
No?
I got it sitting there waiting.
No.
Put my name on it, don't let it go anywhere. So it's not, it's on the southern part of Maine, but all I got to do is I'll put it on the truck. And that's, that's the bad part about it, is it's just everything's so heavy and big. And it's like I told the guys, I said, that boiler don't look bad. I said, it really don't, pretty age of it, the casing's not rusted off, the gasket's still all looked good, except for that one rear section gasket. And I think when we had the overfill problem is when that showed.
Right.
It showed that weak quality, that gasket, that's why I believe. And I just figured it'd be better if I was here in person, in case anybody had any questions, because it's a lot easier than looking across the floor with your hand, right? Kind of figure out what I'm writing down.
Would it make it easier if, let's say, we, we did the louver control and valves now and wait till the summer for the rest of it?
I was going to say, if I'm in there doing it, it ain't going to make any difference when I do it. I mean, it's just, I would say now, because I have the guys lined up to do it. I got a guy I used to work with, Walter Carver, he's going to come down and help me. He's an old timer, he's retired now, but he's phenomenal in steam boilers and wiring. And then I got a young guy that's just full of muscle and drive, so.
That's helpful.
That's why he's coming. Because I said, we're going to need it. So, you know, like I said, it don't matter either way. It's just, I got these guys lined up, so when we get it okay, this stuff.
So I guess, I guess we'll have to compare your offer to other options.
So you said about 11 and a half for the materials alone?
Yep.
About three for the labor, 14, 15, 29, 60. And, and then you said a whole new one, what you call tablet?
Do on the upper side of 40, 45,000 probably to replace the entire boiler. And the reason for that is I can't just lug a boiler down there and replace it. That one's got to be taken apart, section by section by section.
Yep.
Hauled out, and the new one's got to be brought in the same way, section by section, and put it all back together.
And the boiler before this one, I came to test, because I was there. Three guys, six hours with sledgehammers, breaking it up and lugging it out of that basement. Me, my father, and Clayton Mills.
That's kind of where I stand with the boiler and, and I gave the guys the best place I could. I know this community building.
Thank you.
If you guys do decide with it, obviously, I'm not a big company, by no means, okay? So I can't afford 11 grand out of my pocket, so we'll have to figure out a way for cost to cover the parts and then the labor we can do when I'm done and make sure everything. So right now, is the boiler, is the boiler room still just as hot now, or is it kind of?
I haven't been in there.
Okay.
It was the other day.
Yeah, probably because it was running full warp. Yeah. So what I've done for now, temporary, and I think I told you, is I've disconnected the end switch, the one that's malfunctioned.
Right.
So basically, you're basically running off the main room thermostat, because that other one's going to heat the other part of the boiler.
Have you been in the back room?
Yes.
It was chilly. And then furnace came on and warmed up fairly within 30 minutes, and it was not bad in there.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll do for a while.
Yeah, it's kind of functioning like it's supposed to. It's just, it's just keeping that thing from cycling on and off.
It's better than being like 85 degrees and constant.
See, I look at it as better than burning the $4 a gallon, or I don't want it on at all, because, you know.
Yeah, it was going on every five minutes.
Yeah. It was definitely full cycle. And hopefully, now that it's set up properly, it should run a lot cleaner, because we weren't wrong before those other sections took this plug right out.
Well, thank you.
In a nutshell, and I can give you guys a copy of this if you have it.
Oh, great, yeah, thank you. Does anybody, do the audience have questions?
Just a question, I understand we contacted what, three or four other people? Have we gotten proposals back from them?
Well, one was a hoped for proposal, but he said no.
It's too much for him.
Yeah. And?
Okay. No, there's, there's a third one, I guess we've gotten it from, what's his name? Dean, Dean, remember?
That's Conzis.
That was, I was talking. Oh, it was too big for Dean, okay.
Yeah. So we don't have, right now, we don't have a mother.
I've got somebody sitting here that is willing to do the job.
It is a big job.
It is a time consuming job.
And it's a heavy, heavy job, so. That's why I hit Walter up, because like I said, he's, he's done it for 45 years. I said, hey, what are you doing? And he goes, nothing, sitting on the couch enjoying retirement. I said, nothing, go on, I'm having a man.
Well, you know, we, we, we were in a situation where I actually thought it was destroyed when that valve failed and it flooded with the full water pressure. Luckily, it didn't. So we're, we're in a good position, compared to what it could have been.
Yeah, in good position to get it fixed instead of having to buy one or just close down the hole.
Yep. Yeah, that was close.
Yeah.
We actually talked about it, and then Joey was telling me, your guys' water and everything runs through that building for everything.
Oh, yeah.
And that would be really hard to try to shut something down when your water's.
We'd have to still heat the basement.
Yeah, you'd have to either box it in and try to heat that room or some utilizing somehow. I was worried that day when you guys called, I really was like, oh, this is not going to work.
Yep.
What about heat pumps? Oh, just, I know we had also considered adding the heat pumps as like supplement, supplement, but, you know.
Well, I, I think the thought would be that heat pumps would be the majority, where, you know, the boiler would just turn on. And, and actually, you're probably familiar with this, where you have the outdoor reset or thermostat that where the boiler would turn on below a certain outdoor temperature.
Yeah, so that boiler would be hard to wire it up, capabilities of doing outdoor reset. The newer boilers have got what they call like smart systems on it. So it takes the outdoor temperature and it works it over. So if it's 55 degrees outside, this little control says, hey, I don't need 100, 90 degree water to heat this building, I only need 100 degree water.
Right, since it's steam, I know we can't do that. But just, just so that, you know, we have a, an outdoor thermostat that would let it turn on if the temperature outside is below a certain level.
Talking about like a warm weather shutdown switch?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, I mean, you could do that. I don't know what the point of really having the outdoor warm weather shut off would be, because obviously, if the thermostat's at a certain level, even if you were running heat pumps, it's just another part for you to have to worry about wiring and going bad.
No, what I'm saying is, you know, the heat pumps are more efficient up, down to a certain outdoor temperature.
Yeah.
And if the boiler just stays off until the outdoor temperature gets a certain point, then that, then the boiler turns on and the heat pumps say, well, the room's warm, I'm not going to turn on.
So your thermostats are basically doing the same thing. If your heat pumps are maintaining their temperatures in the room, that boiler's never, ever going to run, because that boiler don't have the maintain temperature.
Right, but how do you get the boiler to turn on when the outdoor temperature's lower?
So when the outdoor temperature's lower and the heat pumps aren't keeping up, then the boiler would come on and catch the build up.
So is that how?
If you got your thermostat set at, let's say, 50 degrees, you got your thermostat set, and all of a sudden, you got a 25 below zero day, or the heat pumps aren't keeping up, that temperature on that thermostat is going to drop below 50 degrees. That boiler's going to say, hey, I got a call for heat, it's going to come on and heat the building up to 51 or 52, until the heat pumps can keep up.
Okay.
That's how that would operate without having a bunch of tech mart controls and stuff like that. Because that's the only way you could do it, with steam. Tech mart systems and switches, and then you're just getting into a completely complicated system that I personally just say is overcomplicated. They don't need to be that way.
Okay, thanks.
I can do anything you want, but I just let you know, tech mart systems are expensive.
Yeah.
Very. When the thermostat does, then it will same thing.
Any more questions, boss? Well, I'm not prepared to vote on this right this minute. But thank you very much.
I just wanted to present it to you guys and be here for any questions.
Yeah, we appreciate that very much.
Joey, have you, have you filled any water in the?
Yeah, night. It was damn, just sex. Probably pop it off.
How long did that last?
That, I haven't been in in more than a week.
Okay, good.
Unless we flush it, the longer that should stay in there, because that sludge will get built up around the side and kind of slow it down. That's a good thing.
Well, thank you.
No problem. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. We will let you know very soon. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Nothing, I'm just looking at the agenda and thinking of the minutes.
No. What do you think about this?
Well, I, I think, yeah, as far as sizing the building for heat pumps, no one wants to install heat pumps for the full, full need of the building for the lowest temperatures. And, you know, for $15,000 to have, have a system that's, that's fixed up and dependable as a, as a backup, sounds pretty cheap, actually. Versus pulling it out and, and putting in something else.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I like very much that it can be repaired and, and, you know, I don't want to spend 45,000 on a new anything, but should we try to find one more? I mean, we, we almost have a procurement policy, which I think tells us we should get it.
We tried and people didn't take it up, I mean, I don't.
Well, that was just one other.
No, I thought it was two.
There's not many people that do this type of work.
I mean, you can call.
Steam boilers are a thing of the past. That like, if steam boilers are such a problem now, if we have problems in the future, like if the field is getting so limited, it seems kind of like, are we investing in something that's kind of disappearing and it's going to be expensive to fix it? And also, if we're applying for grants, I'm wondering if we've already committed and paid for something, then can we really apply for grants which will be available in the next couple of months to?
Are you applying for the steam pump? Is that what the grant's for? I would think you still could, because the steam pump would still.
Yeah, can you, can we?
Can we, could we find this and then, then get the grant?
Yeah.
Pay for it after the fact? I don't know, I mean, he's asking for the money upfront for the part, so we are putting the money down beforehand, so I don't know.
But don't we have some money in the community building?
Well, we have money in town repair, yeah.
No, but I thought.
We do, for the community building, we, we're bringing 30,000, we have a chunk.
Yeah.
But can you fit reverse with the grant?
Right.
The only thing is, when you wrote the grant, did you specify?
It's in process.
Okay, did you specify that it was, it was, the furnace was not functioning properly?
Right, and that also makes the grant more appealing and that we're, you know, if we go ahead and fix it and the building's on the way, and then it's like, oh, we're applying for a grant.
The question I have is, okay, well, it's middle of winter and they know you can't just go without heat.
Yeah.
Would they let you do the repairs and then say, oh, okay, well, here is a grant for it.
Because, right, because we need it.
I don't know.
Well, one thought is if, if it is awarded, you, you know, cross out the, the funds for replacing it and just install heat pumps.
And we haven't considered the exact amount, yeah.
We were going to ask for repair and.
Right. It's just as, you know, it's sort of basically written, so if we've changed our mind, that means a volunteer has to go in and change the grant again. And a volunteer was here from noon until almost 6 tonight, so 1:30, so, oh, no. There's a limit on how many volunteers we have to do said projects.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can change it, but part of the point of doing this is trying to get grants, and if we're committing to things and then changing our minds, then it's kind of annoying to have to like, be like, oh, well, sorry, I don't really want you to spend the time doing that grant, let's rewrite it, kind of.
Well, we need to do what's, you know.
Did you have a number to put in for the?
We weren't putting numbers in, I thought we, we discussed it the other day. We sort of did sort of a general, these are the things we're doing, we have bids. You know, I, I didn't, we didn't say exactly, we, you know, obviously, we're not quite finished with it, but the write up of what was, the scope of what was being done, that part's done. And then we have to do a by month, what we're accomplishing. So that's where Dale and I have been sort of looking at it.
It sounds as if the boiler needs repair in, in order to last until the heat pumps can come.
I don't know, is that mine?
Hopefully, a lot longer than that.
Well, I mean.
It's working, right? The building is not freezing, and we're at the end of February. So we've got one more month of probably the coldest weather, and then after that. So the question is, could it last one more month? It's lasted a month since the problem, right? And since it was.
Well, it's in better shape now than it was earlier, because he just serviced it.
Yeah, he has done some work, right.
But how long will it take to get heat pumps?
And is that?
Might be a year.
Well, but we won't meet them for the summer. But, and, and also then again, looking back at the technology, it's like, we're having a hard time finding people to work on it.
Right.
How is that going to be in five years?
Well.
It's going to be maybe less people, and the parts are going to be harder to find, and.
I mean, the, the, well, the smaller.
It's moving out of.
The smaller guys are less likely to want to work on this. You know, in the future, we might have to go with a large plumbing company, which wouldn't have any problem repairing it. The work that he's talking about would update the activators to modern systems. And so I'm not really concerned about being able to maintain it in the future. But, you know, if, if we were to not repair this and wait till the summer, what would you suggest we would be doing with it?
I don't know, we haven't really looked at other alternatives. We, we had mentioned in the past, looking at like, should solar be part of our plan? Should, you know, are there other options? I don't know.
Well, no matter what.
I don't know enough about, but oil is probably not the best green fuel. You know, if we're going to move into something, you know, certainly propane seems like a better for the environment somewhat than oil, which is sort of maybe the lower echelon. I don't know, you know, right now, we've got propane, we've got oil, we've got electricity, we've got, you know, we're like.
One thing people are forgetting, you know, heat pumps, that's, yeah, that's cool, but that's fine. But you're still going to have to have the furnace on, even in the sun.
Actually, no, this is cold start.
You want, if you want people and they use that building and they want to wash dishes, they need hot water.
I, I think we should have a separate hot water system.
Yeah, you can just have a small, a small independent hot water tank, right there. Just have a separate hot water tank.
Well, yeah. Good idea, yes, you're correct, but the thing is, somebody better figure that in. If you're doing grant, because right now, all you've got is that boiler, the hot water.
We could do.
And we have a shower upstairs, we're going to have a, have a warming station.
Probably the best of the on demand heaters, you know, those, and those can run off of our generator if there's a power outage as well.
Will the heat pumps run on this generator?
No.
Those aren't going to run on this generator.
That's a whole nother problem.
We'd need a generator, yeah.
Anyway, so back to the question of repairing this sooner than later, or not repairing it till the summer and possibly replacing it with another boiler or, or something different. I'm thinking $15,000 will, can push that question, you know, another 10 years down the road. And, and since it'd be used only as, as for more extreme weather, you know, I don't think it's going to cost that much for the oil in that sense.
Yeah, that would be good.
Well, there was a little comment, but $3,000 in labor did not sound for three men for three days. Real, he did not sound out of reason.
No, it didn't.
Yeah, I agree, that, that was.
I was surprised that that, I figured five at least.
Yeah.
I think the prices are pretty bad.
I thought that was very good in the price, yeah.
And he, and he showed up.
I don't think he's.
I think that's the bit, that's the bit, and he showed up.
He's worked on it before.
Well.
Revance?
Okay.
Well, he.
Not before that.
No, he was working for Dan River and he worked for Cat Down, we have a lot. He retired and went out on his own.
He's the guy that, that, when we had the problem with the, the water filled valve failing, he came and, and drained the system and got it working again, when we were thinking we were screwed.
So is this volunteer who is grossly overworked and underpaid volunteer?
Yeah, she just, would she just up and walk away from that?
No, no.
How much more can we ask of her? This is going to mess up the grant. No, we have to reword, we have to take out parts and just reword it. I, it just seems like more enticing to someone if we were in a situation where we were having, because that was a big part of what we talked about, the fact that we currently had an issue. It wasn't working, we had to monitor it, we had to maintain it. And if we, if that's not, if that's no longer there, it's taking out kind of a, it could. But the, the grant could go in very soon with, where that is still true. Is that the one that's due the 16th, 17th?
The 6th, March 6th, yeah.
Is there anybody that could come in, a smart engineer or something, and say, you can do this and this and this, and it'll be the best thing for you? Or having them trying to, everybody has a different idea.
They had one community.
No, he actually, well, he came in, well, actually, I was with him. He had an engineer and someone else looking at it to evaluate what was there and what he decided was with their help.
But what I'm getting at is if any guy was trying to go after grants or something. But what I'm getting at is if any guy was trying to go after grants or something, and talking about solar and whatever, and, you know, what's the best thing for down the road, does anybody, talk to anybody that knows what that is?
No, I haven't, who, who would you suggest that we could talk to?
Uh, Darla.
Well.
My expertise, heating systems.
Along other talents, yeah. Does anybody know good at engineering, heating engineers up?
Well, somebody who knows, uh, um, of the different types of heating systems, not just steam or, you know, hot water or anything like that, but knows, knows solar, knows, um, the heat pumps, knows all that stuff.
Great idea, yes.
One of the things, when I was looking for somebody to do the heating, that I tried to find somebody, usually you have the, the heat pump people and you have the gas people.
Right.
Uh, I tried to look for companies that did, uh, at least both, the, the gas and the heat pumps. I found Coastal Energy, um, well, I tried to contact first of the year, actually, he called me back yesterday. And he's also an electrician, so there, and I want, that was something I was looking for, somebody to say, this is the better way of. No, no, this, this is what I, what I recommend, it may be particularly beneficial to him one way or the other. We hope he would be giving us an honest, honest opinion.
Yeah, well, that's what.
That was the goal. The only problem is, I think if you, if, even if you get a grant, the grants and for replacement, I doubt that the grant's gonna pay the full amount. So you're still gonna have money coming out of your, out of your pocket. When you look at these rebates for the, uh, for the heat pumps, they pay a little bit of it, but not real, and the bigger portion, you're still taking out of your, out of your pocket. To me, the fifty, the fifteen thousand dollars versus the forty-five thousand. And since you're gonna use it as supplemental, it's not for the take the beat, the theory is, we're gonna use it as supplemental. Makes, makes sense to me that you repair and you do it now. And if you don't use it for hot water, if you can get a hot water tank upstairs, once you shut it off for the summer, it's not gonna come on.
Well, so we do have a hot water tank that is old and, and taken out of service in the boiler room, so we can replace that pretty easily.
Not in the boil, but put it up in the kitchen.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether there's room for it.
Somewhere near in, in the kitchen area, rather than downstairs, you heat the water up downstairs and you got
It's a long line.
Ten, fifteen gallons to wait for hot water to come up. So the closer you, you have a hot water tank, the easier it is.
Yeah.
That gives you more room in the boiler room, too.
So what are your thoughts, Julie?
So, so, well, it sounds like the cost to repair this is, sounds, we all seem to feel it's reasonable, and certainly, you know, third or better than, than a new one, and so, that's a pro, but con, sounds like it would, could jeopardize our.
So we hurry to our grant, and then we make a decision at the next.
Send the grant in, and then, uh.
Finish the grant. A length over there. Is there any harm in waiting a couple weeks and more weeks to make this decision?
Um, well, I have my decision.
I would go ahead with it.
When, when you write the grant, send it in, how long does it take?
I'm not a volunteer.
Well, whoever does it. How long?
Until you get my bill.
How long does it take before you know what you get?
Um, they come at different times, this one is one is May. It's like May, early June, I think, are sort of the timing, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure those are the dates, there are other grants out there that are rolling and like, you get here within a couple of weeks, there's a lot of opportunities for other, other grants that we can apply for.
But we need volunteers to help write these, please, out there, cyberspace community, we need to, really, it could make a huge difference. Darla cannot do this by herself, and neither can I.
I think one other comment, seems to, at least what I'm hearing, is that Rob and Julie really spent quite a bit of their time trying to keep that system going, so they're volunteer faces. I don't, I think you're roadman, you're not building man.
Well.
No, we, we care as long as.
Until I was able to force that valve partially closed, I had to fill the water every day.
Oh, there's another volunteer. So, all right, well, we can't spend all night on this, but, um.
See, I would go ahead with it, something.
Well, we are three people, and you two, you two can outvote me.
You can, well, call for the vote, and we'll decide on it.
Anyone can make a motion.
Oh, I move that we, uh, accept what is bid for repair.
I second it. All in favor?
Guys, a side.
Well, pen and I.
I will abstain.
Okay.
Well, all right then, and we will take it out of the community building budget?
Um.
And hope that.
Don't text him yet.
Get the grant.
But when can we start? Can he start right away? So that might, if he can't start for a couple of weeks or three weeks, then.
Yeah, but the time for the grant request was.
Can honestly say it wasn't repaired yet.
Yes, but I mean, that's what I.
That's exactly what we, yeah.
So. Don't, yeah, changes a lot of the sort of issue of, you know, it's not, yeah, it's just. I was just, he was just asking, couldn't you pull that piece out? And I'm like, you can, but part of the wording of the grant is Ben, we don't currently have a functional heating system, and so we need to get it fixed, we need to do all these things. So, so pull, yes, I can pull it out of the grant, but it makes the grant feel less.
I wouldn't take it out.
Yeah.
Because he doesn't have a timeline when he's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I would read it in.
So, leave it in, gets repaired, they give us an award, and we say, oh, thank you, but we, you know, we, we fixed it, so uh, what would you like to do as far as, uh, reducing the amount for repairing it? We already took care of that, but thank you for the heat pump money.
Or maybe they would reimburse us for that repair, I think it's not possible.
Less likely.
Yeah.
We didn't get a new one, we just.
You have to write a report, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if it's been done, I, I wouldn't, I would feel wrong about using those things, you can't. You can, you can also ask them to reallocate the funds for something else.
Right.
Okay. We have things in.
In general, okay. All right then, thank you, everybody, for weighing in, let's carry on here, the minutes from last time. We've all looked them over?
Mm-hmm.
And, okay, I make a motion to approve the February seventh minutes.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Guys, a side.
You'll pen it in.
And, uh, the disbursement warrant, number sixteen.
So the, the, um, the bill from Wadman from August until beginning of the year. I guess that's is that sort of just one annual? One annual, um.
It's just those dates from then till now.
I'm just thinking, so it's partial one, partial the other, maybe? So, um, early August to end of January, to Wadman. So I'm just.
I'm finishing up one.
It means four thousand dollars, I'm wondering, how much is that per year?
Uh, well, the bill per year is, I think it's around seventy-five hundred.
Is it? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So.
I need to look over one more.
It's only saying one partial year then.
I did call versions about the Green and the Harbor member last week, that last time.
Right.
And they have pulled the meter on the power failed.
Right.
And taken down the line.
Yeah, I saw that.
You might notice, yeah, and they also suspended the one at the Green, so even though there's still a bill here from it's, it's the final bill until we, we hook it up again, so.
Yeah, we'll save like fifty hours a month.
Yeah, oh, all good. Did you get a look at this, um, Diana? Yes, I just, I saw this earlier, but it was a draft, so. Thank. All right then, um, I make a motion, we approve the disbursement warrant number sixteen.
So.
All those in favor? Prairie eye.
Guys, a side.
You'll pen it in.
Item five, Singer Shoreland Plan. Uh, so we did meet, uh, on the, I don't know, the tenth, I guess. Oh, yeah, we were all there.
Yeah.
Hey, you know that. And uh, any more discussion you wanna have about that?
So, we, um, with, with the help of, uh, the forester, Teresa, uh, we went over, we reviewed the plan, and there were just a few minor changes that she was in agreement with. You know, the plan talks about, uh, uh, a number of things to cut, but when you look at the actual site, a lot of that are suckers from things that were cut in the past, where we were just choosing one uh, from that stand to, to survive and, and, um, and mature, and, um, remove the rest of them, so there really wasn't much that, that's going to be cut that was substantial at all. Uh, in fact, um, it, it also, uh, was brought to our attention that, um, if we planted a few, say, red oak trees in the area, once they have significant diameter, we can cut, um, a couple of trees that are about to fall off the, the bank, uh, we'd have the points for that.
Right.
So it was a good visit, and, um, it was good to really understand the plan, and, and, um, so, minor revisions, and, uh, we're all good with, uh, the plan.
Okay, approval. Okay, so, motion to approve.
Second.
Singer Shoreland Plan. All those in favor?
Will pen it in.
Guys, a side.
Prairie eye. Um, someone did suggest to me that this could come up again, not by them, but.
Well, not ten years for them, but.
But, um, but it's possible that there are other people who don't own land across the road, where the town owns land that might affect their view, for example. And likely on the water, but maybe, maybe not, and.
Well, if it, if it's on the water, then there's more rules than, yeah.
True, but even if it's not on the water, if it's town land, it's town land, and they would need, at the very least, you know, our permission. And I'm just wondering if we should have a policy regarding just how this process should be, for example, in, in the Singer case, they hired the forester to come up with a plan for them. And it seems to me that if it is on town land, perhaps the town should hire the forester and the landowner should pay for it, because it's something they want, but it is town land, do you see what I mean? I'm not.
Yeah, right, and, and I'm not concerned as much about, um, a forester, uh, looking at town property, uh, because they're not really changing anything, and, and, you know, and the Singer's paid for the plan. But, uh, the fact, fact is that, uh, when cutting is done on, on town property, and in this case, it'll be the board that, that selects the, um, the arborist, and will get their insurance card and all that stuff, and they'll be working for the town.
Yeah, the person, the people actually doing that.
Right, and, and.
I know.
Right, and, yeah.
See my point, it just seems like, because, because this could happen again, and I think I don't see any harm in having some sort of policy.
Sure, no.
Well, I think that the, uh, landowner could select the forester and see if the town agreed.
Yeah.
All what you want is that you agree on the person.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And whoever the owner is might spend more time trying to find the perfect forester, because it's their view.
Yeah, so, that's all I'm saying, it's just, this could happen again. So, all right then, and speaking of policies, here we are, procurement policy. Did you get it, the draft, and?
Yeah.
The latest one?
Yeah. Yeah, my only thought on that is, um, we need suggestions on working, um, PO, um, format, you know, purchase order, because that, that's required in there for certain things.
I remember.
I remember that, but, so, what do we need?
Um.
Another policy?
Well, you can, it can be worked into it. Unless it was in a previous version.
Yeah, you said. I said final version. Let's see. Well, well, I'm looking at this, can we just jump down and appoint Katie Eastman to the budget committee? I think that should take about ten seconds.
I move that she be appointed to the budget, budget committee.
I second it.
All those in favor? Katie Eastman, budget committee?
Will pen I.
Prairie eye. Yay, Katie, welcome to the budget committee.
Committee members have to be.
Yeah, just, um, yeah, heads up for all committee members, if it's been a year. Uh, please come to the town office.
I think if your term is three, three years, and it's every three days, you're going to have to sign at the end of the year.
Yeah.
You just said one year.
Oh, okay.
Well, depends upon the position.
Right, yeah.
Like, there's a rotation, I think, for budget committee.
Or ask, if you're not sure. Do you remember, here, I have to look this. Should be the latest one, and while you're doing that, town pier power, I can report that, uh, I did ask, I did file a claim for, with our property and casualty insurance on a few things, and they do not cover the, um, that nice bench, cheap bench, and nor do they cover the circuit breaker power box at the town pier, three thousand dollars or more, and the reason is, it was flood damage. And the reason is, it was flood damage. Yeah. And if it had been a fire, we would have been covered.
Quick, go burn it.
Do they have, for future record? Do they have flood insurance?
Does it even exist, I'm asking?
Yeah. Well, okay, so if our pier got wiped off its footings, that would have been covered.
No.
That has to be looked into.
So, just today, they sent me something called schedules, because I, I said, you know, what? I mean, I presume that all this is in the file somewhere, but as we improve, you know, the pier, now we have all this new stuff. So, we need to update that, they need to update that. And maybe that's in there. But, good point, yeah, the pier got wiped off, that's a good one, like-
You also, you got two?
What?
You got the new pier, and you got the fishing.
Well, floats.
Or floats, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I just got-
I mean, that should have all been put in, updated, but, I don't know.
Well, we could ask Lou.
Well-
Is that for him to do? Is that for the-
No, 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 that's for slack, that's for slackboard.
Well, the auditor keeps track of our assets, but we need a point person, which hopefully, you know, that can be shared.
Hey, how about a volunteer?
To make sure the schedules are up to date, as Joey and I have found that the fire department assets aren't exactly up to date. So, if something with, should be done on a annual basis, but-
Well, I'll look at what they sent and just see what both, so we need the list of what we actually have, and then the update of what the we, or somebody thinks they're working.
Don't be surprised if this, on the insurance thing, when you do it, there might be something that the town bought in nineteen thirty-seven still on the, on the policy that you've been paying for and you ain't got it anymore. Because that's what me and Dallas are finding out.
There's just all, you know, some of it's what was in there before Robin took over, and then it just sort of gets carried along.
Because people are like, oh. And then people are afraid of letting it go, perhaps. So, back to the power pole, we, so we can't, can't put it back there anyway, and we can't, talked about a new pole, but that was, I can't remember, it was prohibitively expensive or difficult to place.
We can't, we can't find a place to put it, because of the flagpole.
But, so I walked there, and as you point out, you know, there's the pole by the road, and there's a little shed, and we could go underground.
Right.
And, and I even had the gall to ask our agent, would you pay for us to put it underground so this won't happen again?
She left.
But, for that, we need, well, you were gonna look into that, right?
Yeah, so, I showed you the layout and under your paper, someplace.
No, but, this is completely different, from the Verson West Shore Road issue.
Remember, I laid out what we'd have to do for the pier electric? It's a, it's a printout? No, that's a, did it come back to me?
Did you email me this?
No, I showed it to you and-
When?
Well, okay.
Was it that picture that was sitting?
It was that picture, yes. I don't think I took it back.
Yeah, sorry.
There we go. Okay, so that, that shows the path. About a hundred and thirty-five feet that we'd have to ditch. And-
A hundred and thirty-five feet from the pole to the shed?
To the, no, well, to the pier, to the, to the walkway to the pier, I should say. And then it would be on the side of the new concrete walkway, going to the pier.
And that's because the power, the poles are, the light is there?
The power comes from the Verson Pole near the road.
Yeah.
And so you have to either install a pole somewhat before the flagpole and have an overhead line to that new pole, and then go underground from there. Or you just go underground from the Verson Pole totally, with a stub pole with the panel on it. Or on the building, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking, putting the panel on the side of the building probably obscure, obscure some view, because it's not that narrow.
Wow. Okay, I did not realize it was that.
So one thought is, you want to get some more questions answered from the electrician, to put in a, to create a formal quote request. We might be able to get some volunteers to, you know, rent, rent a ditching thing.
You don't have to do the ditching.
A ditch witch, like the fire department did for running the new line. And that would save a lot on the, on the project, but we'll, we'll ask for, for proposals both ways.
So just backing up a little bit, we absolutely have to have power at the pier.
Can we pass this around to the gallery? Can we pass the picture around?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, gallery, yes.
Have you seen it?
No.
Now have you seen it either?
Because it runs the pier lights.
I want to show it to the-
Well, another thing-
Couple of outlets, right?
Well, it provides, right, the, the lights flooding the floats. And we, and-
I was gonna say, we could do solar, why don't we do solar?
Well, you need to bring power down to the pier. You can, you can debate this with our hard mass if you like.
Well, I, well, I did, I said, I did ask, what was that box for? He said, lights at the pier, which is great, that makes sense, but maybe there are other ways. And, and receptacles.
I mean, solar's not going to be that bright. And we already went through downsizing the light at the pier. Well, you know what, people falling off the floats as well.
You was at your own risk.
I only go so far.
Hey, I get an idea. Look to see what that grand old, run up, check what a ditch witch's gonna be, but also, if you wanted to, I wouldn't mind volunteering my time, if you want to run an excavator for the day, and I'll dig the ditch.
Yeah, we don't want to use an excavator.
Meaning?
Well, I mean, ditch witch would be better as far as disturbing the, the soil next to the, next to the parking area, that, you know, we, we saw what happens with our storms now.
And the other thing Lou said is there, there are some receptacles, right? You can plug in something.
So you were doing it, right? I don't feel you can see this. Let's see.
Rob, does that sound right?
Well, it disappeared.
There's a couple of receptacles.
On the-
So if someone wants to plug in.
On the end of the pier, right.
Yeah.
If they want to bring the station cord down.
On the end of the pier, not up, not on the shed there, but up there.
No.
Yeah, but the boats coming in use it, so.
And do they pay us for it?
Well, if you, how can you get them to pay? You know, they come from nowhere, if you want to sit there.
Your credit card.
Well, they're, they're, it's, it's part-
It's a timed electric.
Why do we have to have electric on the pier? For years, we did not.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, boats have changed, there's more electric on boats these days.
Well, that's their problem. It shouldn't be the towns, and they don't reimburse us for it.
That's what I asked.
They use the tower, once this discussion came up years ago, when they decided to put the power in. And the discussion came up, well, who's gonna pay for it? So they come in and they charge up all their equipment, and they just motor on out. And this is the way the status that we are now is any, the town is paying for somebody out of town. The power up there, to me, it doesn't make any more sense to do it now than it did when it got voted in before.
Well, no matter what, we can't lose the lights for safety's sake, that are eliminating the floats.
Why can't we put a sign up and say, you know, this is at your own risk?
We, we did.
If it's after dark.
You can do a sign actually now.
You know, we shouldn't be paying for-
You can still have lights, you don't need outlets for people to plug into.
True.
You can go like what Dumba did. So, solar powered.
Well, they're not functioning anymore.
No.
Well, they ain't?
No, it's locked down.
Are the lights on all the time, or are they motion activated?
They come on by time.
It's a timer.
Just have them on all the time, light pollution, like?
Well, you want them on, you want them on after dark.
They're, they're down facing.
I know, but what are we illuminating for after dark? People that come in.
Darwin, did you take a walk down there this summer?
Is it, is it on, like, I guess, the whole season, every night, all the way along?
There was over sixty people down there.
Well, alright, this is to be continued, but we, so we gotta look into-
Yeah, so I'll continue working on it and get a proposal out.
But, if anybody wants to volunteer to look into solar lighting, I'd be curious to see, or, what do other towns do? It must be, you know-
They put lights up.
Hundreds of towns along the harbors on the coast, do they use them?
They may have a docking fee or a morgue.
But, I don't know. I mean, yeah, people do pay to keep their boats there, so does that mean they are entitled to a few free kilowatt hours?
If you're charging more money, if you charge everybody a little more money, to cover the cost of it.
Yeah. Maybe so.
It would work.
There's probably an app, there's an app for that, right? You could come in on their phone and they could, they could plug in and then get billed for it. Well, you know, all this high-tech stuff.
Here's marine-grade solar dock lights.
Alright, to be continued, but we do, it's, this is not, we can't kick this down the road too far, because we have to have something. What, May first? When do we need this?
Yeah, when the floats go in, we should have electric.
Is that May first?
Something like that.
Well, we have some time, but not too much. Alright then, so let's go back to the procurement policy.
Yeah, I didn't see where it said PO, or purchase order, so.
We're okay with it?
Yeah.
Alright, a motion to approve our procurement policy?
I move.
As drafted?
I move, I so move.
All those in favor?
Will pay that.
Carry aye.
Guys, aye.
Alright, we got a copy. So now, okay, Brown Tail. Is Bob Warren there? Bob?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
Great, so, would you tell people some of the things you told me the other day, about what you're doing and what you're thinking?
Yeah, it's a long story. If you don't know what brown-tail moths are, then good for you. That's awesome that you haven't been affected. There's a lot of people that do. Brown-tail moth basically is a, it's a pest, it starts as a caterpillar and turns into a moth. The, they're, they're, wow, it's a really long story. I'll try to make it as short as I can, and if anybody has any questions, you can ask me. They, the, the eggs lay dormant from the end of the summer in nests that are up primarily in oak trees, but also in, now spreading into birch trees. We're entering our fourth year in Sorento of brown-tail moth infestation. Typically, the infestations last as long as five or six years, so hopefully, we're coming to the end, because the moths themselves migrate north. So, anyway, there's so many details of this. Sorento has some severe infestations in certain areas of town, primarily where those trees that I just mentioned are, and there's lots of them in town. There's lots of private properties that are infested. There's also some areas of Sorento that are relatively public, like around the church, the, the dock to a degree, up and down Ocean Avenue, the library, and the tennis court area, croquet court area, that, that neck of the woods is badly infested. So anyway, what we're trying to do is, we're working with a couple of foresters, but Tom Fox most primarily, he's had a lot of experience in Sorento. And we're working with, when I say "we", the town of Sorento has been involved with some mitigation efforts in the past. I think right now, the town of Sorento is not actively involved with, with anybody for mitigation, but, but there are conversations going on. There are some active mitigation efforts happening with individual property owners, and also, the church is involved. And the VIA is involved because of the tennis courts and the croquet court, which are actively used by lots of people and are the epicenter of, of some really bad infestations. Now, if you don't know what the brown-tail moth does, it starts as an egg, it hatches into a caterpillar, they emerge kind of with what the foresters call leaf out. So when leaves start coming on trees, they come out of their nests and they typically fall to the ground, they eat the leaves on the trees but fall to the ground, and they, when they first come out there, they can be an eighth of an inch in length, but they can grow over the next two to four weeks, up to as much of an, as an inch long. The, the, the problem with them is, is that, that the tiny little follicles, the hairs on the caterpillar, and each little caterpillar can have hundreds of these hairs, they are highly toxic to, to, to people, to skin. And it's something like poison ivy. There are some people that are impervious to poison ivy, and it doesn't bother them, but the vast majority of people are affected by poison ivy. Same with brown-tail moth hairs. There, it's not, generally speaking, it's not a life-threatening situation, but it's incredibly rash-provoking and itch, it's incredibly uncomfortable in terms of itching. It's not life-threatening, except if you're involved in gardening, and if you're involved in some landscaping business, like cutting grass and stuff like that, the hairs fly all around, and if you ingest them, and you get the hairs into your lungs, then it can be, it can be life-threatening. Okay, so, now, you get to the mitigation effort, there's, there's three different, three different elements of mitigation. One is what we call pruning, which, that's a euphemistic term for, we used to call it snip and burn. It, it's hard to do, and it's somewhat expensive, because it takes specialized equipment, takes a bucket truck, and you go up into the canopy of tree with two people in the bucket. This is done in the winter, because in the winter, you can, the nests in the trees are, are very noticeable, visible. The bucket truck goes up into the nests, you snip the nest, and the nest goes into an incinerator that's held by the other person in the, in the bucket, and that burns it up. That's the best way. It kills, it kills the nest, it kills the eggs, and it kills the caterpillars to be. The other two are, the other two forms of mitigation are injection, which is, they don't call it poison anymore, because it's actually much more eco-friendly than it used to be. They call it medicine. They call it medicine, tree medicine, but you inject, um, a, uh, basically a serum into the, the root, the root and branch, uh, system of a tree, and it falls its way up into the branches and the, uh, caterpillar to eat it and die. That, uh, was not highly, um, accepted by environmentalists. The brown tail moth phenomenon on the east coast of the United States goes back to, what I know about it is about, uh, twenty years ago, it became evident down in the, um, Massachusetts area. Cape Cod especially. Um, the problem with the, the injection methods and, and, uh, materials that they used at the time is they did kill the, the, the caterpillars, um, but they also had a toxic effect on other wildlife that ate the dead caterpillars, birds, squirrels, stuff like that. They have modified that and, and, uh, refined that now so that it is, um, as I said, eco friendly. I don't know the science of all of it, I just, um, know what I read and am told by, um, people that do understand the science of it. So you have the pruning and you have injection, and then, um, the third thing is spraying. Um, and the reason spraying is, um, used oftentimes is, uh, because if there are trees that cannot be reached by the, the, uh, the, the most effective method, which is the pruning with a bucket truck, and you get way up into the canopy of the tree, there are the topography in Sorento particularly is such that they can't get trucks down there. Um, and, uh, so there are some times, and our tennis court area is a really good example of this, is, is that we're in our third year of fighting these things, um, there. And, um, when we've done some injection, we've done some pruning, uh, there still is, uh, some prevalence of, of, that they emerge at leaf out, and so that's a time to spray and kill them. So, anyway, sorry for the length of this, um, for the V I A infestations and some private landowners that have big oak trees and have a problem with, uh, with these pests, the church, the library, that whole neck of the woods there. Um, we do have some estimates that I was, we were supposed to have, um, earlier this week or the end of last week, we don't have them yet, but, um, we've been doing this for a couple of years. Um, and so we're, um, we're, we're in hopefully towards the end of the infestation, uh, cycle, but, um, last year we had, it was really, really bad at the, if you're familiar with the tennis courts in town, there's a part, there is a porta potty there, and, um, we were not prepared for what happened with that. That got badly infested with the caterpillars and for a couple of weeks before people realized what was happening, um, if you went into that and closed the door, um, you were, you were almost automatically affected. So, anyway, that's kind of the, the nutshell of it. It's a bad situation, it's very uncomfortable if you're affected by it, um, and it's, it's a nuisance, um. The good news is, is that the experts say that if we're in the fourth year, that hopefully within a couple of years, um, we hopefully will have this, uh, infestation phenomenon behind us. Um, but in the meantime, we're, we're working to do what I just said, to mitigate the situation as best we can, so.
Great, thank, thank you very much. Uh, um, Bob, I just thought we should know about it and would like to know about it, and I know the town has done. Would you tell us what we have done in the past and?
I'm not sure how long ago it, it has been, but we did hire, uh, Fox Forestry to, uh, to trim,
mitigate.
to trim off, uh, Nass along Ocean Avenue.
And was that just like the apple tree?
It was the apple trees down, down.
Mostly apple trees, yeah.
Yeah.
Down, that village green.
Yeah.
That's where it was bad.
What?
They were really bad along that very.
Yeah, and we didn't, I don't think we did last year, I think it was the year before at least.
No, it was longer than that, Rob, it was about five years ago.
Yeah.
What happened, what was done there was actually very, very effective. It, it did manage to clear out, um, it managed to mitigate some of the population. The problem is, is that, um, they, it repeats itself, you know, and so, um, and, and the toxicity of these, uh, the thing, without getting too graphic about it, they fly around in the wind, you know, and, uh, and so, and so you get, you get a tree taken care of, and that doesn't mean that, um, that you're done, that they, it comes from other places. And, but anyway, the effort that was done by Tom Fox along Ocean Avenue, I think it was, it was quite a few miles of it, um, worked for, um, a while.
Good.
Good. So, so he did reach out to us and he, he is in the area giving estimates for.
Did he give us an estimate?
No, but I, not yet, but I, he asked if we were interested, and I said, yes, we would lo- love an estimate, I thought.
Sure.
Um, for Ocean Avenue. And, uh, if he could divide it into segments, you know, just sort of the different areas or where he thinks are the worst areas, and, uh, and give us a quote. So, I haven't heard anything yet, but.
Yeah, divide it in segments with, with a rating of how infested it is.
Yeah, how bad it is and how much it's gonna cost. And just town property? Is that what you're doing, just town, town property? Yeah, well, it's all the town can do, right?
They were between, you know, where they were on Ocean Avenue were so bad several years ago. It was between the tar and the salt water. It was, it was those trees that were so badly infected.
So we'll get a quote soon, I hope, and then, you know, there's nothing in the budget for it.
Well.
No.
Um, yeah, we used, uh, uh, the shoreline, um, account for that.
Oh, the ship?
Yeah.
Isn't that on after the storm?
Yeah.
No, uh, we're probably using road funds for that.
With all the clearing? I think we're in the negative already.
What, you said clearing?
All of the wind damage. No, the like brush cutting and everything, and then, yeah. We, we, we just need to get a December storm.
Yeah. As well as a dam.
Yeah.
But in any case, we'll, we'll get some numbers and we'll, we'll look at this again and decide if we
Right.
can and want to do something.
The, the, the one, there, there's a cer- there's a degree of urgency to it because, uh, the work that, the mitigation work has to be done in the wintertime, so we have until, yeah, if you really stretch it till the middle or end of April. But right now, February and March are, are the two months where it's best to be done.
And has, um, Tom given you quotes?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You, you, Bob, any quotes yet?
No, I'm waiting for a lot of stuff. I mean, I'm waiting on several individual property owners as well as everything that I just said about, uh, the V I A stuff.
Yeah, okay.
And that, and that helps the town, actually, um, because it's a huge concentration at the top of the hill there, the church, the library, um, the, the courts, that, that's a, that's a big concentration of the trees that they're in.
Okay, well, thank you very much. To be continued.
Yep.
Can you begin with a couple of volunteers?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, well, actually, if you are walking on Ocean. No, I'm serious.
Go by with the blunt torch.
No, no, no. I was told, and you can burn them.
You burn down all the trees, no problem.
No, you, I was told that you could dunk them in a bucket of soapy water.
Oh, sure.
Water with a little bit of, bit of gas or carry. To make sure.
Is that okay, Bob, have you heard that?
Yeah, well, it depends, no, you don't, I'm telling you, don't, don't fool around with the caterpillars. By the time they get there and they're on the ground, no, don't step, step on them and grind them into the ground. The time to, what you're talking about with soapy water is when the moths, the caterpillars turn into moths, and the, and the moths themselves are not toxic, but they're the ones that lay the eggs at the end of. So if you take a moth, and I'll tell you where you'll find a moth, is that if you have a screen door at your house and you have oak trees around and they're infested with the, with these critters, um, and you have a light outside that door, you'll wake up in the morning and there will be, there will be white moths all over. Now, if you can take a, a, like a whisk broom or something like that and brush those into a pail with soapy water, that kills them.
But like right now, walking along Ocean Avenue, I've seen these net, what, what I think are these nests, and if.
You see them in the, you, you mean you see them in trees?
I've seen them in the top of trees, but I also wonder is, if, if I'm seeing them along, on the brushy areas. And like, you don't think that's?
They're in the trees.
Oh, they're all in the trees?
No, no, they're in the.
No, they're down low.
So is there any harm now in taking clippers and putting those in a bucket of soapy water? Is there any harm in doing that?
Well, I don't think that would kill them, that'll kill the moths. The best thing to do with the nest is burn them.
All right, well.
Put a little bit of gas.
Yes, it's a special, just go over them, I get a can of ether and a big wetter.
Oh, boy.
We'll find you alongside the road, smoke.
Wait, if we start burning, is Joey gonna come yell at us for starting fires? We are not burning down Sorento. No walking along.
Put a little bit in with the soap and the water. It's what the state said seven years ago.
Well, thank you, and be careful out there. Wear a hat at the very least. No, I, I, it's a, it's a huge, it's a serious problem, and I hope we can stay ahead of it.
There is a pharmacy in Belfast that makes the medicine you can put on.
Oh, the itch medicine.
There's, there's actually, there's pharmacies everywhere that, that have it. It's, they started in Belfast a couple of years ago as they were moving north, and then three years ago, a pharmacist in Blue Hill came up with a concoction, but now they're all, it's all over the place, it's, it's fairly easy to find. But hopefully you don't get to that point.
Right. All right, well, thank you very much. Uh, let's get to Bluehost, Wix, and Zoom thoughts. Diane.
I have three points to make, okay?
Sure.
What are, okay. We have, I don't think, I, my understanding is that we've talked about, but not voted on having the, the, um, website on Wix and the, um, come on email on Bluehost. What I would like is to put the website on Wix because I understand that it would be faster and you would have, okay, you've got these two hosts, and they use different programs to make the website. And the, the website's being done on Wix with people who are familiar with it. And if it were there, it would be easier.
Well, the, the website's almost done.
Yes.
It'll, it will be on Wix.
Okay. Then that, that, that's great, okay. So the website's on Wix, and the email is on Bluehost, and.
Email is on Bluehost because, um, we have, um, we had a multi-year payment of, of, of posting for the email.
Well, also, when, when I talked to Daphne, she thought it was better on Bluehost because she said she wasn't so happy with Wix's email, so.
Well, Wix's email would cost a lot of money.
Yeah, so, okay, fine, and, and, but I mean, we don't have to vote, that, that's set, okay.
But then you have some Zoom thoughts.
Wait, I'm not done with Bluehost and Wix. My second, well, this comes from looking at Zoom. What I would like to do is to hair, and, and maybe this is all something I don't know, to have the, um, the top, who's the, uh, you know, the right name, the host, let's say, and each one be, be the town. And so that I could go to the town office if I wanted to look, uh, at the, um, underpinnings of either the website or the, um, email. I could then go and open it up and see what's there. We, we didn't used to have a, uh, the people running the town, you know, this is a while ago, weren't, we couldn't do that very well. But now you could, so that, that would be done through the town, and it would be as if that, it was a recept- the, the town is acting as a receptionist. If you wanna look at it, if you have a reason to look at it, you can go and look at it. And, okay. And I, I hope. Okay, for Wix, who runs it? What's the name of the account?
It's a company?
No, our, our website. What's the name of our site on, uh, what's the name of the Bluehost?
Well, it'll, it'll be, uh, Sorento main with M E instead of M A I N E.
Oh, we're changing it?
Well, we, we have two domains that I secured years ago. And, and it, it takes a few days for a domain to get moved. And, um, since the Sorento M E domain, uh, was sort of parked and, and, you know, held so no one else can take it, uh, it made sense to use that one at the moment for the website so that the email doesn't get, uh, interrupted.
Wait, so, so Sorento main is for the website?
No, Sorento M E.
This is a website?
Website's Sorento M E, or will be, it's not available yet.
What?
And it's gonna stay that way?
It'll be both eventually.
Sorento main is the. Some people that go to Sorento main dot org. Well, it's like all over throughout the website.
Uh, the website is advertising the website?
Well, just when, like, yeah, it's the email, it's mostly email that would be on there, but, I don't know.
I mean, when we announce it, we can, we'll just announce that.
Okay.
So is the email staying?
But then.
Um, yeah.
Because the email would, because it would, the email would be on Bluehost. Bluehost would have all the email.
I mean, eventually, uh, we can just make both of them, you know, echo each other, and it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, but then where does the billing go? I mean, who, who's the, okay. I have the website for Long Pond. So I log in. Who, who logs in and then gets to see what's there? Should be some town name.
Um, well, as far as the administrator of the website.
The administrator.
You know, that, that can be decided later as far as if it's Sorento main, uh, email or if it's, um, something different.
But who are the administrators now?
Well, there isn't a website yet.
There's no website yet.
No, who's the administrator for the email?
I am.
Well, then that should be changed so it goes to, so it's a.
Right.
Not a single person.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, town office.
So that, okay. That, that's what I wanna know now, we'll, we'll go to, um, Zoom. We have a problem sharing on Zoom, right?
Well, I forked it out, but.
As I.
I mean, it's new since last time.
What you told Tom didn't work. Okay. The thing is, when I looked at, um, Zoom, you have your account of whom, that account should be a a town office address, so to speak, and name. And then you're an administrator.
Right, so I, I changed that.
What?
I've changed that.
You're not an administrator?
No, uh, so I made up an email called, uh, comms@Sorento main.org that anyone can log in. No, so I made up an email called comms@sorrentomain.org that anyone can log in to that email and in order to in order to approve a connection on a different computer. And so I, actually, I started that today, as far as
But, but, okay, well, let, when, okay, look, the thing is that you have the person who is the host of Zoom, of Zoom itself on our, the person in charge of Zoom Pro, and then underneath you have the administrators. So he is an administrator.
No, but, but I changed it so that it doesn't require my email. Everyone, anyone can use the email of C O M M S at sorrentomain.org with the password, and they can get in, if Zoom is asking to approve a connection to Zoom, they can use that email to approve it. So it's no longer connected to me.
So that means
Well, anyway, whatever, okay.
Right.
When I tried, it didn't work. But anyways, let's, let's go on from that. What you have here is certain things that we need for Zoom that have to do with us. Like you're running this, and if, who knows, you got stuck in the lab, you know, maybe someone else, that's one thing.
Right.
Another is, let's say, Tom Bailey running his committee, if he needs people to be able to access what they need as they need it, and it like, there's one account. Anyway, I think that my understanding from going to Zoom and reading their what they say is that the person who has, who is able to make the changes that we would need in order to make it what we want, which we can't really know till we find out what, what some of the other people want, is the administrator on top of us, the, the one, the host. That, that, in other words, your administrator
Okay, so previously, it required my email address in order to approve a connection to Zoom. That's no longer the case. And so, this morning, no, not this morning, this evening, I got here early and started things up and started writing instructions so that anyone can, can set up a Zoom.
What, what you ought to be able to do is to call the meeting. Okay, you should have Zoom, and then you should have, basically, in that same thing, a list of the various recurring meetings that we have.
Well, the Zoom account has that.
Yeah.
No.
It does. I can show you later.
Well, then it's inaccessible.
Well, it, let, let me, let me type this up, and the next meeting, I'll go over it. Because you know, no matter what, everyone should be able to start a meeting without me.
Yes.
Oh, well, yes.
Yeah, you could, you could start a meeting, you can start your own meeting.
No, no, can start a Sorrento meeting with, that is a reoccurring meeting.
Yeah.
Whether it's a SLIF board or planning board or
Yeah. So that's been set up, but I'm in the process of, of making detailed instructions.
It should be easier.
So you
It should need detailed instructions in order to get in and find whatever it is.
Well, hopefully.
Well, the thing, yeah.
I agree with you, we need it, yeah. Can I be simplified?
No, what, what I saw was that if you did it, if you get it, if the person who is above did it, they could do all that stuff because they had those powers.
So you mean like someone in the town office?
No, no, you, look, here's Zoom Pro. Whoever is running Zoom Pro, we're, we are people who are inside Zoom Pro to, to
Users.
Users, you're
But, but, okay, so you, I, I put you down as a user, and I wasn't sure why it actually worked, but you were able to get in.
I got in, I got in as a basic user so that I could do my account and nothing else.
So you, you didn't get in as Sorrento user? Okay, that makes sense.
No, I get, I got in there when I, when I sent Diana, from my email, Diana Gadsden Sorrento, and I had, and I was an individual user. I was a basic accountant, so I couldn't do anything.
So that explains it because I tested other, another user situation, and it didn't work. So that's good, because after I saw it didn't work, I, I removed my email from the account and put in comms@sorrentomain.org, and so that that one email account will be used as the host, and that can be handed off to anyone who needs to start a meeting for the town.
In other words, the, where you are, you were an administrator. You were the only, the only
I was.
So, so you
I was, no longer.
Okay, because I asked to be an administrator, because I'll find out if I am. It will be you on.
Well
But, okay, so now, instead of you being an administrator
Anyone can, with the, that email address and the password can, can get into, or two passwords. The password for the email account
Yeah.
and the password for Zoom.
Okay, so they're getting into your account with, you said, have your
Used to be my name, no longer. It, it's a separate email just for being the host of Zoom.
Okay, but I got that from Tom Bailey, and it didn't work.
Well, we'll work on it, because I got, I got that to work for Tom, and let me
He said it was difficult.
Well, it was difficult to, to get started as far as, you know, working with emails and stuff, but it did work. We'll see.
All right, I'll need that for next time?
Sure.
All right, to be continued. Just a couple more things quickly. Sherry asked us, we, we have these very small amounts. If you see this list, outstanding taxes. Some of these go back seventeen years, ten to seventeen years, twelve to seventeen years. They are amounts that range from one cent to eight dollars. Most of them are around two dollars and forty cents, three dollars and sixty-five cents.
I don't think Ron has one.
No, I looked at it.
Oh, you did. We've been just carrying these on the books. It's, it's just a little nutty. The grand total is thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
It's motion to write off.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Gadsden, aye.
Little panel?
Curry, aye. Thank you. Eleven, Versant application, utility location, mint application, so Versant is relocate, no, I'm sorry, replacing poles.
It looks like replacing.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure.
Well, I live on the west shore, and I have noticed every pole has these stakes with orange ribbons.
Okay.
And
So
so, and we just are supposed to sign off on this.
Right, so Joey
Somebody is, I guess.
If they did, it looks like they did flag them, so I think we need to make sure that they're a little further away from the road.
Wait, so you want them replaced?
Well, there, there's two of them near the four-way intersection, I think, or at least one, that we tried to get Bangor Hydro to move away from the road, and you can see it's, it's actually hit by Wing of the Plow a few times.
It's about halfway gone.
Wow, at the four-way?
Yeah, so it'd be good if it was moved a little bit further away. They, they may be saying that it's in private property, but I think we should need, need to ask that question.
Yeah, because he, the guy, he was here in today, did he talk to him, the Versant guy?
Um, not, about, he was, he was contacting homeowners. There were two people he was looking at.
Right, because the poles are
He thinks they are possibly on their property.
Right, and and so if you're thinking of adding, putting a few more poles possibly on someone else's
Well, it, it's just those one or two poles that
One was Leah Haven.
Yeah, I, I know about those, but then he talked about ones that these guys were not, but that's because that's what
As old as they are, they may have mackings, but they are going to replace them.
All right, so do you want me to call this guy, Bob Fairweather?
Okay.
And ask him, I mean, do, just say, we'll, we'll sign it conditionally? We'll sign it only if you promise to
Well, we can sign it and I hand the paper.
Yeah, right. So are the ones you're thinking about on this?
Let's see.
It's a lot of poles.
Actually, I didn't realize how much of, it's like the whole league.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sherry, what is this made? What's six, four, eight, eight? Oh, is that a feet distance? Eight meters?
So, so this is
Okay, so that's a mile is what, five thousand something feet?
One, five, two, or three feet.
This is well over a mile.
Yeah, this is, this is not near the four-way. This is more near you.
Yeah.
Yes, they, they, they have GPS pins
Yeah.
to go by.
Anyway, that's a lot of poles.
Yeah, it, it, it's not even that area.
Do we want this? Do we want it replaced? Well
Do you want old poles to fall down?
We're not paying for it, right?
No. This is called
Our rates will go up.
No, this is called maintenance.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, you know what happens when they replace poles, the road gets you have to stop.
This should be done.
Okay, all right, should be done.
So I, I move that we approve the pole replacement.
Okay, they're gonna start beginning at a point approximately a hundred and ninety-three feet northerly of Sorrento Avenue.
We're Sorrento Avenue.
Right down here.
The end of West Shore.
The west shore and east side meet from there down, that's Sorrento Avenue.
Yeah, so, so what I was talking about is south of it.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
So they start there and are going over a mile. All right, fine, I, it's, there's only room for one signature, so, because that's me?
You got it.
Or did we make a motion second?
They can toot for it while they're putting the poles, and they'll be up, they should trim all the brown-tailed moles. While they're near it, I know.
I'm gonna ask them. I'm gonna call Bob, hey.
Don't let you use the bucket truck while they're at lunch.
I'll sign this conditionally, get rid of the All right, did we have a motion second? All those in favor?
Okay, aye.
That we, yeah, sign this for it. All right, I'm doing that, and I think we're done because we talked about volunteers and
I still need one, from two to eight, or two to eight.
Okay, one more volunteer needed, two to eight P M. So please, somebody out there, come help us out, volunteer. We need you. It's a great way to meet your neighbors. And public comments on agenda items? Yep, there are none. Okay, motion to adjourn, second?
Okay.
Curry, aye?
Little panel?
Gadsden, aye. Aye, eight forty-four. Sorry, it was so long, but we I think we discussed some important things.